I'd like at this time to call the September ninth, two thousand and fourteen meeting of the Acton School Committee to order, and with our apologies for being a few minutes late, we're all in another meeting. So, we will start out with any adjustments to the agenda.
I haven't one.
No? Okay, then we'll go to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August fifth, two thousand and fourteen.
I would like to make two corrections. Number five, communications and correspondence, I believe, is enrollment with two L's.
Two L's.
And then, I don't know if Mr. and Mrs. Lowell also have another L on the end of their name.
Two L's.
So, we're just missing L's. Otherwise, I accept these minutes with those two corrections. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with those two corrections.
Seconded. The move is seconded, that the minutes of the August fifth meeting be accepted as printed with those two adjustments. Any discussion? All those in favor? So moved. Now look for approval of the meeting minutes of the executive session meeting of August fifth, two thousand and fourteen.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes I've written.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any comments from the public?
Yes, I had something I'd like to say. This summer I heard on the news that there is, the state has funds to start public pre-Ks in schools and school departments within the state. And I was, with our enrollment going down, you know, this could possibly be a good opportunity for us to take advantage of the funds and start a pre-K program inactive. And I was wondering what the school committee has discussed about this, if it's been discussed, or if anyone has any ideas.
I don't think it's been discussed as a board. The BAM program, we supported and got in place for this past year, but I don't think that's anything we've discussed, but it could be something we could discuss if there are
I would like to discuss.
If there are funds, yeah.
Especially if there are funds available.
Absolutely.
I believe it's casino funds, but it's money that's available for.
We'll take their gambling money.
You know, getting the pre-K program.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, I'd like to ask Kim if she heard about that and her grant writing class.
She's asking.
The funds, because you're saying these are like, your grant funds?
It's money available for schools and school departments to get this, get the program started. They want pre-K in the state.
As I understand, there's state money.
Yeah.
Because there's public preschool. And like in Elliott, that's a public preschool, it's not private. And this money comes from the state. There's a long application that needs to be filled out by the administration, by the administrative staff. But, so, and you have to sort of fill, you know, give your reasons why, you know, it could be a good thing for our school and everything. And, you know, it's just, it's all of it, money. Supported Hanson Elementary has a pre-K.
I would like to, you know, set up a committee to look at that and find the funds. I definitely would love that.
Yes.
And we'd also have to look at, you know, facility, you know?
Right.
Who we have? Would we have to hire someone new? Different things. But I think we should look at that.
I think, you know, when it's going to be part of what Sylvia and I will talk to you tonight. Kind of segues. But we won't take that time, but, you know, yeah. We would probably like to be on that committee. And Judy.
I'll get my daughter.
It is definitely something we have talked about, Lisa, you know, and that's what was why the BAM.
Well, that's why BAM went to two days instead of one.
Right, that we want to head in that direction. And BAM sounds like a great thing, but not everyone knows about it. I found that paper out, oh, there was something I found somewhere that had some information about, oh, must have been in Mr. LaBranche's room, but I didn't remember seeing anything. I don't know when it starts. I know it's Tuesday, Thursdays, nine to ten.
Probably in the pressing pause.
The school people get it.
But the regular, the website and the, it's been in the newspaper. Oh, it has been.
Definitely right when you opened the website, I was like, bam. Somebody put it right out there.
It starts October seventh. October seventh and Thursdays from nine to ten. So, Mary, would you like to head up a committee on that?
Yeah.
Okay. And why don't you talk with Sylvia and Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe enlist another board member and find out who else in the building is interested. Send out an email and see who would be interested in serving on that.
Yeah, put Judy down there. Right?
Yeah.
Judy Washburn.
Yep.
Any other comments from the public? Dick.
Yeah. I'd just like to compliment the maintenance staff for the parents in the school and the grounds. I think they've done a tremendous job and, as usual.
Thank you.
I think we need to clap for that. I totally agree.
Thank you.
I was just teasing somebody else in the hall on my way down about wiping out the scuff marks on the floor.
Uh-oh.
He was very busily working at it. Any other comments? Thank you, Dick. Any other comments?
There have been two soccer practices so far with the Sanford Acton combination of junior high students, and I've heard nothing but great feedback from the combination of the two playing together as one team, so, very excited. And the parents did comment on how beautiful the building was. Didn't realize how nice the school was, though. Thank you again to the maintenance staff.
We have an opportunity to lead in athletics instead of fall. It's wonderful.
And will we be a part of that big soccer thing that goes on Columbus Day weekend?
Yes.
Will we use our deals again this year?
We are doing that again.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Then let's move right on. Communication and correspondence, do you have any?
Nothing extra other than what I put in your, the two large things that I put in your packet. One of them, the finance policy, and one of the senior management evaluation program that dovetails with the teachers' balance.
Couple of books for us to read.
Yes, thirty-two.
Okay. All right, let's have Ken's report, please.
I'm really pleased and positive about our start this year. The only little glitch I've seen is that, luckily, I guess it wasn't too serious an accident, but one of our bus drivers, ready to come that morning, his family had a car accident that night before, so Bus C was a little bit late. But if that's the only emergency we've had, or the only problem we've had, with the sixth, seventh, and eighth program now underway and doing well, we're just very pleased that the startup has been excellent. The team spirit is here all the way, and I appreciate particularly the sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade group who have made this change happen already, and so I compliment Mr. LaBranche, Mr. Cody, and Mr. Putnam for going the extra mile and helping the sixth graders feel like they're part of the middle school concept. So, thanks again, and also Brenna and Sandra Packard, Sandra Packard and Brenna have taken the fourth and fifth classes, fourth and fifth grades, which are really unbalanced in terms of numbers, and they're team teaching, so that's going to make a big difference too, I think. So, thanks again for that initiative. So, the next thing I wanted to talk about is that one of the largest amount of work that we're doing in parallel with curriculum changes and Common Core and changes to the structure of sixth, seventh, and eighth is the evaluation, which we're going to talk about every month because it's so important. We have teacher evaluation, we have a meeting on Thursday. There was an excellent presentation by telephone and audio and visual, because Mrs. Payne from the state wasn't able to join us, but she answered a lot of the questions that we were having, and we had some folks from both Massa Physic and Noble with us, joining us. So I thought that was a very productive event that was held a couple of weeks ago. And now, we are back in the swing of it on Thursday night, Thursday afternoon at three, I believe we have the next one of our evaluation meetings. And the reason I put in your packet the district leader evaluation model and discussed also in my notes about eye observation, which is a method that will help management be very consistent in the way that the evaluations are done. It is not a teacher thing, it is not a principal thing, it is not a superintendent and a school board thing, it's every, it's all of our thing. We do it together, and I think that together we'll have a very successful program. The Marzano program allows us to, based on what the state has told us, to use their format and then adapt to our needs. So, I'm really pretty excited about what's going on, and we'll have another meeting on Thursday. I do apologize as Kim does for the size of that effort that she gave you on the new business policy plan. Not that you didn't have a business policy in the policy book, and it did have several items in it, but the depth of what is necessary for grants now dictated that Kim spent a lot of time taking some successful ones from around the state and making it our own. So, I want, Kim will talk about it in a minute, but I want to thank Kim for all the time that she's made doing that, and I thank you for, even though it's first reading tonight, I know that it will take a little while, but we do have, she'll mention in October, drop dead, dead on, so we'll talk about that, too. Andy has a little bit of a presentation this evening in his minutes, his facilities report, because we would like to make room for more needed supplies or more needed items by saying goodbye to some less needed items. And so, we'll have a discussion a little bit about tables or a few things that we, as administrators, feel what we don't need, that we'll have to look at just how we move those to someone who does need them. And we do have a policy in the policy book about disposal of items. So, we'll let Andy talk about that a little bit later. And so that's all I have this evening, but I appreciate the fact that our administrators will bring good items to you, and we'll see how that goes.
Okay. So, let's go on to the administrative reports, and we'll start with Tricia.
Well, you've seen my report. We welcomed Ryan Martin as our new phys ed teacher. He comes from Wayne, Maine. He is an exceptional athlete, and kids are getting to know him, and he is so enthusiastic, such a, he truly just glows, he's just so happy to be teaching. And it comes from a family of phys ed teachers himself, so we're excited about that. I have my report, you know, the kindergarten students, we have twenty-one students, some of the most confident coming in. There were no tears shed the first day of school because of leaving parents. I'm not saying the parents didn't have shed tears, but the kids did not. Really, just, even the walking down the hall, the confidence they're showing, I know where I'm going, I'm all set, I know my way, a lot of just lookout world. So it's great going in the classrooms, and I included some pictures there. The Day of Caring coming up this Saturday. We have a chart, I've actually got it enlarged, not only that did you get an electronic copy, but I have an enlarged one in the office, filling in the different activities. As people have commented, you know, the high quality of our school allowed us to do extras that other schools don't get to do, so planting of not necessary, but rather nice-to-have perennials, working on things inside and out. So again, there's room there for people to still join in. We've got community members, kids, family members. We have, still expecting members of the retired MEA teachers, and there'll be a, I guess in a large, one of the large vans will be coming down for, from St. Joe's, so their students, their teachers, you know, students becoming teachers are coming to help. We're starting at eight o'clock Saturday morning. We've got the time, estimating to end at two, it may end sooner, depending on the large size of the crowd and the work to be done. If anybody has any questions, they can still call me or email me. Again, it's been put in the paper, notices have gone home to parents, it's been on the website, and, you know, just excited to have some, some nice extras done around the school and to have people come together and, you know, work for the positive. So, that's exciting. The teacher evaluation has been mentioned. Mike will be talking about Empower from a technology point of view. I say in my report, you know, it's really, for us, it's about the tool to get us to communicate with parents about what students are doing for learning in the classroom. So again, it's a computer program that's going to allow us to clearly demonstrate to parents what curriculum is being taught, whether or not their child has mastered a certain standard. And we'll be making an announcement at open house and also following up with another meeting for parents to come talk about report cards, and that should be happening in October. I have in my report about professional development, a lot of stuff happened over the summer. A lot of good money was spent on great staff development, both in-house and out. I want to acknowledge that Marty Hess Palmer has been excellent resource for me through the special education department. The BAM kickoff is October second, seventh. Right now, we're scheduling it for Tuesdays and Thursdays. And again, the library and music and art departments are working together weekly to meet, to plan, and coordinate their efforts for the kids. We've had one fire drill practice. After our in-house meeting on Thursday, we'll be talking about when and where for the rest. We're going to be talking to the outside agencies about improving our fire drills, our lockdown and emergency plans. I summarized for you the middle school activities. I do believe that there will be a future plan of demonstration for you, some of the new things that the kids did together on the first day of school, the work that the middle school teachers have done to help the kids become more comfortable with each other. A lot of smiles down that end, a lot of, very ease this, these first four days of kids transitioning between classes, coming even off the buses, out of cars, much quieter start to the day overall, really a lot of sense of calm. And then I want to highlight the memorable moments. Again, the kindergartners, absolute confidence leaving their parents, had to remind the parents it was okay to let the kids go. She's fine, I know mom, I know. That was great. Melinda Bandhauer introduced her thematic perspective for teaching this year throughout all her classes, and she's got other people on board. It was inspired by Mr. LaBranche's love of geography, and so she started the teacher workshop day with a great visual presentation. She's called it Around the World in a Hundred and Seventy-five Days, the Student Days. And a lot of teachers are joining with her on that cross-curriculum topic. And then I want to highlight Jen Goodwin's face, every day of the summer, as well as since school has started. As she's prepared the libraries, you can see how beautiful it looks and how excited she is to be back in the library. Nothing but awesome happiness coming from Jen, hard work, just, it's been fabulous, and I just wanted to say it's noticed.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm going to show the red on my.
And then the upcoming events, so any questions?
No, it's, it's, it was great to see the, see the pictures of the kindergarten kids, and I actually printed mine out ahead of time, so.
To powder color.
And also, I don't know if all the board members have been on the website to see it, but some great pictures of Rachel Driscoll's kids that did a reading program in the summer and then had a get-together here at the school, and seeing the kids there with their parents and everything, that, I didn't even know that was going on, and it's, it's great to see, to see teachers taking these kinds of initiatives and doing things, and to see the enthusiasm of the kids and the parents together at that, so that was great.
But the kids transitioning into the kindergarten, what helped probably was they took a bus ride, they learned how to come here and all the preparation.
The step-up day is definitely a positive, absolutely.
A big difference in that.
It absolutely did. It really gave them a sense of where they were going, but even in the spring, we could tell that they were really ready, you know, emotionally, they're ready. It was, definitely, I would always do that spring step-up day again, wouldn't you agree, Sylvia? But it just gives a.
We, and also some of the students that were maybe a little bit more hesitant, they had an opportunity to come in during the summer, too, so I think that helped, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, some of them must be the BAM kids.
Not too many yet. Much ado.
It's all good.
All good.
Good, thank you, Tricia. Ken?
Well, my, my report's changed a little. Basically, the front part is now a revenue and expenditure summary, so you have what was budgeted, what we've actually spent as of nine, three, and the variance between the budget and the actual. And I did that, and I summarized each article under these signatures, and that way you guys can always have, you know, if you ever need detail, as far as this, I'm more than willing to give you the detail, but I figured as long as this is, this is actually part of the procedure manual that you've got.
Not the policy that someday we'll vote on.
Yeah, well, soon, I hope, because. The other, and the rest of my report is, I have summarized like the Title I grant, the Summer Literacy Grant, the Local Entitlement Grant, Title II, the Small Room Grant, that we, you know, we have all the numbers for, and that's summarized in the back. As Ken had said, I presented him with a draft of our accounting procedures manuals. Now, it, it goes together with what's already been voted on. This is more of basically a procedure manual for our whole central office, so it basically lays out exactly what my role is, what Crystal's role is, what the directors are, the principals, the superintendent, how they all, you know, how we have dual control, internal control, and, you know, who does the bank reps, who, you know, who does, you know, every step, and then how those steps are laid up. And there's a lot in here specifically about grants, and this is a reason for this whole policy anyway, is our local entitlement grant requires this policy manual, and it has to be done by, actually, it has to be done and submitted in before November thirtieth. So I wanted to make sure you guys had enough time to do your first reading, your second reading, and adopt it, and plenty enough time for me to get it up to the state. What's really key is with the grants, not only do you have certain reimbursement procedures you have to follow, there are databases you have to check with the federal government, anything that's federally funded, you have to go on what's called SAM, which is a government, you know, it tells you every vendor, whether they're, whether you're allowed to use them or not, so it's an exclusion database. And, and every time you do a reimbursement, any vendor you've paid, you have to make sure that everybody's checked. So that's part of the procedure, so, but if you have any questions about the procedures at all, you know, don't hesitate to tell.
Can you just repeat when you have to have it to the state again?
November thirtieth.
Okay.
And that's why I really wanted it presented tonight. I know you still have to meet as a policy group. I'm hoping by the next one, you'll at least vote on your first read, and then by November first, have the final, I'm hoping, you know, in that way it'll be ready for, to send in. Oh, and just to give you a heads up, I've already started my draft for the undesignated form policy, but I've kept it down to two pages.
Good. Thank you.
Now, this draft, is this something that's, it can't be brand-new?
No.
To us, to, I mean, it's something that's brand, brand-new that you have to account for, is that?
Yeah, we don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
We don't have anything at all.
No.
Not a step.
Right, okay.
And I can send you a file that takes a word draft off there when everything's done, but I just didn't want it mixed up. I didn't, you know, if you guys make any changes, I'm going to be able to make the changes and then.
Anybody got any other questions for Ken? Nope. Thank you, Ken, and thanks for all the work on your volume.
Volume one.
Michael.
As everybody's explained, the start of school's been pretty smooth. I have deployed about ninety-five percent of our devices. Every teacher is getting adequate presentation equipment, projectors, document cameras, I'll be ordering speakers. Everybody gets a, got a new laptop to use for, you know, teaching purposes. So that is coming along smoothly. Over the summer, we did have a professional development session hosted by Apple. They came here two days to train staff, the overall use of particular pieces of software. A lot of them came out after the, after the training sessions, saying they were kind of on overload as far as, you know, learning, but it was a, basically a taste of each piece of software, and then from here, we're going to go further. We're going to, you know, I'm going to find out what they want to learn, they can go off and learn on their own, requesting more professional development from the state. My goal is to host in-house training as well with focusing on Google, Google Apps, Smart Boards, and other tools that we have available. So that went great, and hopefully there'll be a lot more to come. Curriculum, Tricia had spoken about Empower Educate, a piece of software that we're trying to deploy right now. We established a team to review what the software is capable of doing. We attended a few demonstrations here at the school, along with at Stanford. Stanford is implementing Empower for their math and English Language Arts curriculum, and they're aligning to the Common Core. So, our goal and our objective with all of this is to move forward towards a standards-based reporting solution, but also to be able to hand Stanford our data on our students and say, here they are, and they can just pick up from there. With this software, we'll be able to do that. We'll just be able to seamlessly take our data, hand it to them, they can put it in their system and see, you know, where the kids started from in kindergarten to where they are now. And Tricia pointed out that this will be a great reporting tool for the parents, but it's also going to be a great tool for the teachers. They'll be able to see where the kid was in kindergarten, how they did in kindergarten, their evidence in kindergarten, and carry it on until all the way up to eighth grade. So you don't have to go digging and rifling for papers or data in different locations, it's all right there, one location, the data, the evidence, everything, at your fingertips. So, the server is in development right now, most of the curriculum's in place, I just have to figure out how to administer it and then supply the staff the appropriate training to utilize it effectively. And with all of this new technology comes new problems. We've experienced a few, but I'm working with the faculty and the systems to rectify any issues that have been popping up. They've been pretty minor, and that is about it.
Sounds great. Anybody got any questions for Mike?
Nope.
Busy, busy as usual.
We all have been very busy, yes.
Thank you very much, Mike. Andy?
Yes, included in this evening's report is a list of things that we accomplished over the summer months. And one thing that I'd also like to mention that's listed here in my report is that we accomplished everything over the summer on the reduced thirty-two-hour-a-week schedule, which, at first, when we first reduced the custodial hours in the summer, there was, you know, a little bit of additional work here and there that had to be picked up by myself. But this summer, through the guys being self-motivated and working as a team, we, we really had a successful summer. We have discussed that the. Um, we have discussed at the administrative level, um, getting the room changes, um, established sooner in the summer, uh, actually, in the spring, so that we have them prior to summer, so that everything that happens in the maintenance department moves, you know, it's really hard to explain, but kind of like, once I get my plan and set the wheels in motion, if things change, which you always have to expect, um, you have to shift gears a little bit and reprioritize, and I did feel that this year, and, and, you know, as a result, I definitely want to look at getting all the room changes and this, you know, where the staffing is going to be earlier in the year, along with the summer maintenance request. Um, but regardless, we pulled it off, and, and I'm impressed with what the custodial staff has done. Um, the other thing not mentioned in my report that I did wanna bring up is, um, I kind of planted a seed with Ms. Kelly and with, um, Ms. Whitney about, uh, creating a sports committee. Um, part of the reason that I planted that seed was looking at some of the, um, old, the older meetings, like when the fields were established, and, you know, a lot of things were really taking off with the athletics. There used to be a sports committee here, and that kind of dissolved over time. And, you know, through conversations that we've had, um, there are, there are still needs for our teams and supporting our kids in athletics. And looking at how some of the things in the past were accomplished, I thought that it would be a good idea to re-establish a sports committee.
Are you talking more like a boosters?
No, I'm just talking about, um, a group of us, like the athletic director, uh, coaches, phys ed teacher, um, myself, 'cause there's gonna be, you know, some potential planning and development of certain things. Um, just anybody that might be generally interested in, you know, being on the sports committee. Um, 'cause there's gonna be, be goals of like field improvements. Um, we've talked about, you know, dugouts at one time were brought up and supposedly voted on, and they didn't happen for some reason. Uh, we talked about, you know, wanting a scoreboard on the field. Um, we've talked about, um, the ultimate, which would be to combine both fields and be able to play simultaneous softball and baseball on the fields. And looking at, again, looking back on how some of that stuff was established, um, I felt that it might be a good idea to get the sports committee, maybe like back up and running, and explore the possibilities. Um, so I planted the seed, and they've kind of gone with it, and we have a meeting scheduled for September twenty...
Four? Is that right? The seventeen? I guess the seventeen.
Yeah, it's scheduled.
It's the Wednesday coming up.
Yeah, um, so...
The twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So I'm hopeful that it will be beneficial. Um, long-term planning committee met on the twenty-first. Um, I'll report out on that at, um, the proper time in the meeting. And the other thing that Ken mentioned earlier is that, um, we supplied the classrooms with tables this year. Um, we had like fifty tables that were brought into the building. The guys assembled them, um, distributed them throughout the building. And last year, we also had a batch of tables that we were able to obtain. We assembled them, put them in the classrooms, and as a result, we have generated like a ton of desks, uh, that have gone into storage, and our storage is maxed. Um, the upstairs in the garage is absolutely full. The building out back has got a ton of desks. The basement is, um, slated for the day of caring for a good purging. Um, so that's why I wanted to kind of initiated the discussion of disposing of a lot of desks. Um, a lot of the desks are in good condition, so just simply tossing them out is not an option. Um, so I went and sent an email out to the administrative team to look at the disposal policy, and would like to have the committee weigh in on what your pleasure is with the tons and tons of desks that we have in storage.
Do it like we usually do it. You got the policy, and put it out there that we have these desks and take them on.
It'd be so nice to donate them.
Donate to who?
To a poor school, a poor school district. Wow.
Um, I had contacted Ruth's Reusable, um, about donating our everyday math books since we switched our program. Um, I haven't received any email back from them, but that would also be a place to look into.
That's a good place.
Yeah, 'cause they, usually, the poorer schools come, go there to get resources anyways.
Might be, some people that might be homeschooling that would like to have desks, 'cause if they have a little schoolroom or...
Private Christian schools or...
Well, we could first put, I would first put it out to the community and say, we have these. They're under that limit, so it's not like, we, we, we could just throw them in the garbage. Yes, but we're not gonna do that. Um, but I think if we first put it out to the community, if anybody wants them, and then, I, I like the Ruth's reusable thing.
But I guess what I'm, what I'm definitely looking for is just an overall, you know, agreeing, you know, from the administrative team, from the staff, and from the board, that, yes, it's okay to move forward under the terms of the disposal policy to free up some storage space.
Okay, so let's, um...
Well, first, it has to go out to, I don't know if it's already went out to the staff. No, if it already went out to the staff. If the staff says, oh, wait, I need a desk, then the community, and then out there.
Yeah, I plan on, and I plan on keeping some desks here.
Thanks, not a hundred and fifty, I guess.
Just not, just not over a hundred.
Okay, yeah.
So let's, um, I'll entertain a motion then to, uh, give Andy permission to work with the administrative team and the staff in disposing of the surplus of desks by following the disposition of school properties policy.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All, all in favor?
Yeah, as long as we follow this policy, shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, celebration of learning. All right, let's celebrate our learning.
Um, Sylvia and I wanted to have this opportunity to share with you the results of the program. Yep, first, I wanna thank, um, you know, Tricia and Ken, because we, teachers like our students thrive and learn best in a risk-free environment where you're encouraged to take some risks. So thank you for allowing us to take this risk. We, we appreciate your support. Um, we do have good news to share, um, and I'll give you some data. And because of my professional development with that mic, I got some zippy new charts for you to look at. Um, and this is, because usually, you know, I'll have little charts like this, but I could give you some pretty graphs to look at. Um, what I did is, on page one, it's the, the reading achievement that, that each student achieved, and, um, and it's quite impressive. Um, if you, if you notice, I need to look at one, I just, um, okay. The blue is the beginning of the program. And each student, like WB, he started, you'll see here, at a level five, and then he achieved a level eight, so that's four levels. Sylvia and I talked before the program, and we said, what do we really expect out of this program? Well, we said probably about two reading levels achievement in four weeks would be a reasonable expectation for an intensive program. They exceeded our expectations. Um, and you'll see, one student, you know, three levels, another one level, and he is, of course, going to receive intensive intervention. But the average amount that each student achieved, the average for the whole class of eight? Yeah?
Eight to nine.
Eight to nine, was three levels, so that's awesome. So, and then, you know, our, our sort of hypothesis was, well, you know, maybe through the Spire program, if, if we make the more efficient decoders, this would happen, okay? So turn to page two, and you'll see, the blue is, gee, these kiddos were pretty good to begin with, weren't they? Look at the, how high. This is at a, like a seventy-five percent, you know, anywhere from sixty-two, fifty-six to, to what's the highest one?
Seventy-six, seventy-seven?
Eighty-two percent accuracy in decoding. That's very good. But if you get up higher to closer to ninety-six to a hundred percent, look what happens to the reading levels they achieve at a faster rate, and it's very impressive to, to us, and we were surprised.
We were surprised.
You know, and, and you don't usually get this much achievement in a reading level. Diana, as a reading teacher, knows that, right? I mean, we're happy if they go up maybe, what, a level every three weeks, maybe four, you know, right? I mean, but this is as we wanted it to be, intensive teaching for accelerated learning. So this was very successful. I have another thank you, though. The other thank you is to this amazing teacher. I get emotional because she's amazing, and without her, I'm not so sure we would have been as successful. She brought joy to this intensive teaching. There were games, there was, oh, the water...
That first week, it was so hot, it's like, okay, I don't wanna be here either. They had, they had to read a word first, and then they could go through the gauntlet of the water soakers and...
As their reward, not their punishment. It's a kid's thing, right? And, and, you know, they each, you know, when they achieved, you know, they had a good working day, they got their Lego pieces, and these are mostly boys. We had one girl in the program, and so it's a tangible reward.
They all had a Lego kit.
Yeah, building cars.
And then, and they, and could go home with it, but part of their working, if they worked hard, they were able to earn some Legos to go towards their kit, their finished product.
Oh, is this this year's kindergarten or the incoming?
Let me tell you, this was the Step Up Literacy Program. It's reallocated Title One funds that Kim and I wrote the grant for. And I said, you know, what I'd really like is to target those kids, because they, a lot of our kids come in to kindergarten, it's sort of, you know, piggybacks of, you know, the pre-K. A lot of them come in at such a deficit that in actuality, Sylvia's doing two years in one year. They don't come knowing their alphabet. They don't come knowing how to write their name. Forget about sounds that are associated with letters. They don't come knowing really how to, to, to hold a, I mean, it's like you're doing preschool and kindergarten in one year. And so what I, since I do the testing at the end of kindergarten, it, I said, I think this would be a good test, and thank you again, you know, 'cause I wasn't sure what it would be. But I knew that with this wonderful teacher and the intensive program that Spire is, that, that we would achieve something. And at the end of the program, each child got a certificate, you know, to congratulate them on their success and to share with their parents the data. As you probably have guessed, I love the data, and I love the numbers, and it is what it is, and I'm always real about it, but the numbers tell a story, you know? And, and I just, you know, Sylvia and Sherri Smith did such a beautiful job, and I think this will illustrate how excited these kids were. One child had an opportunity to go to Fun Town Splashdown. Nope, I'm going to...
Had to come to summer school that day.
Had to come up to my, yes.
Yeah, his mom came in and said that.
He'd rather come here. Pretty good. Sylvia wanted to, to kind of share with you the, a little bit more information about what actually was done this summer.
So I passed you out that little packet. Um, it talks about the Spire program. Uh, earlier in the year, you saw the Sound Sensible program, and that's the kindergarten part of Spire. What we did, um, after we finished Sound Sensible, Sensible this year in school, we continued on with Spire. So that was also kind of, oh, for some of these kids, extending Spire into the summer is just going to get them that much farther, and also, kids lose their skills over the summer. So it was a way to give them four weeks, you know, in the summer, in between getting out of school and then coming back to school. Um, so what I gave you is a packet about the Spire. Um, it is set up on, on the, the reinforcing lesson, letter, uh, letter I, short I. There are, uh, ten steps. The first step is the phonogram cards. Uh, then we talk about the phonological awareness. Uh, step three is, uh, doing word building, so they're making the word slip, and then they have to change it to flip. So they're having to hear where those changes are and change it with their letters. Um, and then, step four is decoding sentences, and at the end, uh, there are the sentences, this page here with the words, and then there are sentences at the bottom, so you can see what type of work, work they're working on. And what they have to do, uh, one of the big focuses that we found with the Spire program is, um, that the focus is on the vowel. So when they look at a word, they're not looking at the beginning and working through putting those sounds together. The Spire program wants them to look at the vowel first. So we're actually training them. They all had a green marker and on, on those words, the first thing that they did, if you go to this page here, the first thing that they did is underline the vowel and then go back to the beginning, underline the vowel, say the sound, then go back to the beginning and put all the sounds together. It works.
I'm gonna tell you a little story. Sylvia and Sherri, at the beginning of, um, the, the day, they would meet in the cafeteria and breakfast, and what was the game called?
The game was Bang that we would play.
Bang, and so there are these words on these cards, and I am no, just observing, and I'm watching this particular student who's struggling, and I think the word was trap, and he's saying drip and all these other possibilities, you know, and I'm thinking it's a T-R-D-R thing, and I, as a teacher, would have tried to work on that one. New learning for an old teacher. She says, what's that letter say? What's that vowel? He went, eh, oh, it's trap, and it was like, uh, efficient, you know? There it is, the vowel unlocks the word, so that's new learning, because that's not how we were trained, okay? There it is, yeah. So you get them, the vowel is the hard stuff in a word, right? You got vowel themes, you got digraphs and diphthongs, and you got, and it's always the stuff that the kid wants to avoid, because, right? Right? So will this program teach, does the hard stuff, and it unlocks the word. So we would like this program, of course, to continue, you know, and have a summer program, because, as I said, what we've noticed is, and I don't think it's in, in just, you know, to our school, but a lot of kids are coming in at a deficit. They don't have, you know, a lot of interaction maybe, or they're, you know, they don't have that teaching, maybe the younger parents, I don't know, but they're coming at, at quite a deficit. And, and this, you know, if we have a program, it would, it cost us five thousand dollars this summer, that was the reallocated Title One funds, and we would like to advocate, you know, that maybe eventually, it could be part of the budget, that we would have this kind of intensive program for those kids who, who need that extra boost.
And they're regular ed.
And they're regular ed kids, these are not special ed kids.
No, it should, every kid should get this, every kid.
And they do during the regular, you know, kindergarten year, but I want it extended into first grade and second grade, and then, you know, on up, you know, if necessary. But just because we need something for those regular ed kids, my hope was that my Title One students in first grade would not be as many, because usually, I take about half of Title One kids in, in first grade. I want to target the lowest achieving twenty-five percent and support, you know, the reading in the classroom, so not have so, so many, you know, and I think I'll be able to achieve that this year because of the achievement that these students had, so...
So you're saying that this scatter is gonna show up on your literacy wall?
Yeah, oh, yeah, and we're doing a new test this year too, Judy. We're doing the benchmark, the Founte Center finale. So yes, I'm hoping, this is a, this is, you know, we took this, it was a test, and this is our kind of test group that we're gonna follow along. Now, some of them will be in my Title One program, but instead of me doing one-on-one intensive teaching individually, I'm gonna do more small group, two and threes, you see, because they don't need that one-on-one that I would have had to do
for the, for, you know, all year, actually.
I had a caseload of kids that I had to do one... I had a caseload of kids that I had to do one-on-one intensive all year to get them. Okay? Yeah. So thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share that with you. And something for the, us all to think about is how we want to carry this forward.
And I, I think it goes back to, like Judy was saying, about the preschool. You know, if we can get something more formal for our preschool students so that we know they're coming in with the skills that we want them to come in with.
Yeah.
You know, if something that's, we can get money from the state to do that, you know, then they'll be coming in more prepared and then going on and doing the Sound Sensible and then the Spire program.
Yeah.
You know, I think our kids can be much farther ahead.
Yeah, the earlier the better.
So when they get down to...
Yeah.
Seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah. You know, it just, yeah.
The momentum. It was very exciting to do.
It was. It really was.
To do the summer program.
And fun.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say thank you for sharing and person, speaking from my own personal experience, like, you know, I think the world of you, Sylvia. You worked miracles with my two boys, so...
Thank you. Yep, she was the one.
I'm wondering if we want to change our order of business here and go into our executive session and then just come back. These things aren't going to take very long.
I think your exec session will be fairly long.
We don't have much here.
Okay, let's keep on going. Committee reports, long-term planning.
Well, he gave the agenda.
We've, we've got the list, right?
Yes.
I have to, I have to say, I really enjoyed our long-term planning because got to tour the school and get more of a history of like what's going on with all parts of the building. And I found it, I can't, thank you enough for taking that time to show us around.
Yeah.
And I know I can advocate more for the school knowing what the needs are for the facility.
Yeah, thank you for coming on board and joining the committee. One of the, one of the things that we talked about long-term was energy usage. And one of the things that came up, Kim joined us at the meeting, was grant opportunities for funding possibly a solar project for the school. So I will be contacting different people in the state that offer those services as well as contacting other schools that may have taken on solar projects. The other thing that I am working on with Craig Norman is, he was here last week, and there are still a number of light fixtures in the building that Efficiency Maine are offering rebates on. So we took a look at some of those fixtures, and he's going to give me a cost as far as what, what it will cost to replace them, what the payback period is, and what rebates are available through Efficiency Maine. So it's going to take some time to gather the information that we're going to need on the solar possibilities. And then also, I'm kind of thinking along the lines of if we are able to undertake that through a grant opportunity, that there should be a learning experience involved for students at some level. Maybe just understanding what it's about, seeing the project happen if it does take off, which I hope it does. The other thing that we talked about was security. We talked about the swipe cards, we talked about expanding our camera system. Our camera system that we installed two years ago is pretty much full, the capacity of the cameras to the... The server. Server is full. So if we want to add cameras, we've talked about adding cameras on the playground, we've talked about adding cameras to a couple of blind spots outside, one being the bus parking lot.
I was going to say, we're not going to mention those blind spots.
So it's not so much the... So those, those additional cameras would have to be on a standalone system.
Actually, it's not so much that the system's full, it's the cost and the complexity to go to these locations that you just mentioned, the playgrounds, behind the garage. It will be more cost-effective to have standalone systems that they're host than to run cable all the way out there or underground all the way out to the field. Because it has to be high-quality cable, has to be, you know, outside spec.
Durable.
Weather, yeah, weather, weather spec. So there are, there are two options. You can run the cable or you can get a standalone system.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Then the other thing that we mentioned was the swipe card system as far as entering the building and the capabilities of what that also has attached to it, maybe beneficial. We've talked about it before. Then the other thing is the security system that we currently have through Protection One in the building. I've mentioned it to the committee and to the long-term planning committee on a number of occasions that it is a very dated system. And at some point in the future, the near future, I hope, we're going to have to do something as far as upgrading the system. So...
But you're going to price that out, right?
So there are a number of things that we're working on as far as building security goes, energy efficiency goes. The other thing that we did when we took our walk around the building was we looked at the windows in the fifty-seven wing and the seventy-eight wing, and some of the doors as well. They're dated, and it's something that's going to be up and coming and is going to have to be replaced. So I'll be looking at that as well.
Well, we would like to incorporate all this into the strategic plan.
Absolutely.
And it, this is not, this is all, isn't going to happen next year. It's just something we're looking at long-term, five, 10 years out, just so everyone knows.
We looked at, we looked at a lot of the different things, you know, inside the building, outside the building. We have a parking lot that's starting to deteriorate. We have cement, walkways, sidewalks that are deteriorating. And we're going to have to start planning on budgeting money or taking, you know, setting so much money aside. We have a, like an emergency fund established, which is awesome. You know, it's not money that we're going to have to go to the voters for or try to come up with somewhere in the budget. So, you know, these things are up and coming. We've had great support from the community in the past year since I've been here as far as, you know, the upgrades and the projects that we've taken on to keep the school decent. But we've got to keep the ball rolling. There's going to be other projects coming our way, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does the policy committee meet?
No.
No.
But we should try to meet to have a good discussion internally about Kim's report that we need to think about.
Right, because it says it's the first reading, and I don't think I've got the first page.
We're probably not ready yet for the first reading, but we'll do our first individual readings and we'll be ready at the next meeting maybe to...
Or call it the first reading then?
Yeah.
Are Tuesday mornings a good days for you? We can check, we can check with Mr. Burke.
He's going to be landing here anytime now.
Yeah, most, he is?
Yeah.
Landing anytime now, okay. Oh, you, he sent you a message? Oh. Yeah, Tues, I mean, all depends. I mean, most Tuesdays are off, but do I work Tuesdays? Yep, but I'm sure we can...
Should we try for two, two weeks from today?
What would that be? Two weeks from today would be...
Twenty-third?
No, I have a class I have to go to on the twenty-third.
You're going to have to work this out later.
Right, because Kevin has to be okay with that too, yep.
He should be coming.
Yeah, he's a little after seven, he's a little after seven now.
Okay, but we will work on it.
We can move on.
And we've already taken care of the desks. I would entertain a motion to offer a one-year probationary contract to our new phys ed teacher, Ryan Martin.
I would make that motion upon hearing from the principal about him. If she, she recommends it.
I highly recommend it.
Okay.
And I would say that the hiring committee would also concur. Outstanding.
Okay, then, I will make the motion for the one-year probationary contract to Ryan Martin.
Seconding. It's been moved and seconded that Ryan Martin be offered a one-year probationary contract for teaching phys ed. Any further discussion? All in favor? So moved. I think that's it. We've cut it off, have we not?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session at seven-ten to discuss personnel matters.
Okay. You second it?
I second it. I'm the second girl.
Thank you, I'll be going.